This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 3rd. The meeting is available by GoToMeetings as well. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Handmade a motion. Is there a second?
I think second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Approve the minutes of the May 27th meeting. Any additional corrections or anything? A motion to approve?
I'll move to make the motion.
Todd made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? We'll call Todd.
Aye.
Mark? Pam?
Aye.
Cindy?
I'm staying.
Jim?
Aye.
Motion passes. County attorney.
Well, it's been a couple of weeks since I've been here. Last week, I was seeing kids. Before that, I was doing mediation, I think. So, the last time I was here, one of the things that was on my immediate list was to get things prepared for the wind ordinance. I've not forgotten it. I've not done it. I've just been doing other things. But that is, I guess, something I intend to get done pretty quickly now. I have some court hearings today. I have a trial scheduled for tomorrow. It might not go to trial, but it might. And then next week, I have county attorney conference in Okoboji. I don't always go to those things. It's... I didn't go last year. I don't think I went the year before. I think I went the year before. It can be kind of fun, I guess. But I appreciate it more if they condense everything down kind of like in the one or two days, you know, and say, here's our educational sessions. But like a lot of things, some of it's social time and stuff like that. So, you end up doing the stuff. But the reason... I do learn a lot of those things. I mean, you have a lot of prosecutors there covering things that are important, that you need to learn, be aware of. So, that's good. But it also does allow me to stay in touch with different people I work with a lot. Either other county attorneys or people at the Attorney General's office that help me a lot of times. You know, they're there. At least some of them are usually there. And so, I like to at least go to kind of stay in front of them, stay acquainted with them. You know what I mean? So, when I'm hassling them all the time, which I sometimes do, they at least can say, oh, I know who that guy is. Kind of a moron, but I know who he is. You know, so... So, anyway, next week, I'll be there. But I'll try and get those things put together here. I guess right now, that's about... I mean, it's not the only thing we got going on. But I guess that's the only thing I have to mention, unless you guys have something that you want to mention. All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff update.
I don't have anything for you unless you have questions for me.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Sheriff. Department head discussion?
Yeah. I'm sure you guys have gotten calls regarding June 18th. That's the Bitcoin mining meeting. So, if you guys have anybody who calls you asking questions, you can either try and answer them yourself or you can just direct them to my office. I'd be willing to answer any of those questions that they may have regarding that meeting. It's taking place at 6:00 PM at the Nature Summit. There will be no public comments during that meeting, so...
Will you be taking action that night or just discussion?
That's the plan. It's written on the agenda as discussion and possible action. So, I mean, that's... I would think that's what they're going in there to plan to do. But I think that was the plan last time and it ended up in a tabling decision, which happens. There's nothing wrong with it, just... So, yeah.
The question that has come up as far as why is there no public comments? And I know you told me that. You want to just mention that, what your board said about that?
Yeah, so the... I left... Obviously, I leave that decision up to the board to decide because that's their decision. They decided that they would not like public comments because they took almost two hours of public comments during the first meeting. So, they didn't feel like public comments was needed this time.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yep.
Can the public write letters through the board?
They can. So, if someone wants to submit a letter or submit an email, I'm required to provide that to my board prior to the meeting. But I have to be very specific about that. I cannot take them after the meeting has already begun. So, if someone submits something during the meeting, I cannot submit that to the board. It has to be prior to the meeting. So, I would probably suggest if anyone would like to submit something, do it at least 24 hours in advance so that way the board can get their eyes on it and at least have the time to read it and review it. But yes, people can submit letters and emails or documentation if they so choose. I'm required to provide that to my board.
Thank you. Jim?
Hello. I just have some updates, if that's okay for you guys. So, I just wanted to update you guys on a few things. So, this is our child care flyer that we put together. I mean, as you guys know, we are one of nine communities that participated in the pilot project that addressed child care solutions. And so, the program is working like it is supposed to be working. So far, here's the data. We have added 79 additional children are being served in the county. 19 additional child care professionals have joined the workforce. 63 children have been removed from the waiting list. And $1,284,085 have... are the funds that have been raised from December 2023 to current. We have 41 total investors from businesses, foundations, individuals, and public dollars. And so, I just wanted to share this information with you guys. The program has been highly successful. The state has actually announced... The Department of Health and Human Services has announced that they... You know, this pilot program was highly successful. And so, Sherry Penny with Iowa Women's Foundation, but she's at the... She's with HHS right now, but she got the governor's ear. And the state has decided to invest in the program for their additional dollars into the program. So, they did announce sometime recently that there's a statewide solutions fund. And so, what that is, is just it's a new fund that allows individuals and Iowa businesses to contribute. So, it's kind of like ours, but it's the state's fund. And so, so there's like the big corporations, John Deere, Casey's and stuff. They wanted to contribute to the program, but they don't want to be responsible for dispersing it out to all the communities and stuff. So, they really wanted the state to handle that. So, the state has developed that fund and they're looking for funds to go into that. Depending on who, what businesses contribute to that, we could be eligible for some additional funds. Also, it sounds like there's like another 2-1 grant that will be coming soon as part of that. So, just wanted to share that with you guys.
So, a couple of questions. And I think you said 1,000, 1 million?
Right, right.
284,000, so it's significant anymore. These people didn't... Don't see this. So, it was over a million dollars raised. So, the fund that you're talking about that they're creating, the Casey's and John Deere's, that's contributing too. So, then do we apply for that? And is there a matching side of it on our part? Or are you going to those details?
Yeah, I don't know right now. Right now, they've just announced that they have this fund, the statewide solutions fund. So, right now, it's just the announcement. I anticipate that we're going to hear more information as to, you know, who might be eligible. And so, I don't know that we know that stuff right now. It's just... This just came out. I just printed this off. There's a date on here, May 20th. So, May... This came out May 20th from the Department of Health and Human Services. So, I would say there's more information to come. I don't think that, you know... I think we're all wondering like, okay, like, you know, what does that look like for us? And I think right now, they have to work on building those funds up. Then maybe once they build those funds up, because I don't know if there's any funds in it like today. It's starting at zero. Or maybe they've gotten pledges or donations. Like, since that time, I just don't know. So, I think we just will wait and see and all monitor and make sure that we don't miss anything and that sort of thing. But definitely, I think there's more funds coming. So, that's just great. I mean, especially as we think about the sustainability of the program. So, we're offering the $2 per hour supplement to the licensed facilities in the county. And so, there's four. So, you know, little cats, you know, technically, they're in Howard County, but they're doing a lot of benefit. They provide a lot of benefits to Mitchell County. And so, the Child Care Coalition decided to put these little cats as part of our, you know, in our program just because there are a lot of benefits to that. And they are providing a lot of services to Mitchell County. I mean, we all know people need daycare so that the parents can go to work. And we have lots of openings, so we need the parents to go to work and the daycare available, open and available and accessible so those parents can go to work. Great. So, we had our meeting last night. Just wanted to let you guys know that... I mean, as you guys are aware, the city of St. Ansgar has withdrawn from the 28E agreement. And so, our attorney put that amendment together. It was approved last night at our meeting. And then, I also went to the Stacyville City Council following our meeting. And so, I have this amendment and I'll get to share it out to you guys. But I mean, the highlights of it are is that the agreement... The city of St. Ansgar gave their notice that they are withdrawing from the 28E. It talks about how it was originally recorded on February 14th, 2002. The 28E agreement is amended to remove St. Ansgar as a commission member. St. Ansgar will be removed from the board and all voting rights in the commission as of May 12th, 2025. The remainder of the 28E agreement is unchanged. Only the portions concerning the city of St. Ansgar are removed from the original 28E agreement. And so, it's a pretty simple amendment, but it does require it to be an agenda item at the city council meetings and then the signature from each city or entity. And so, however you guys want to do this, just let me know. If you want it to be on your agenda next week or if you want me to get all the signatures from the cities first and then you guys are the last signer, I can be as flexible as you want. And so, the city of Osage City Council meeting is next Monday. Riceville's next Wednesday. And so, I will need to track down some of these other development corporation signatures as well. So... Any questions about that?
Can you send us the...
I will send this to you, yep. I'll send this to you as well as the resolution from St. Ansgar indicating their withdrawal. And then, I'll also give you guys like those... They're not really... Their amended joint agreements from 2002 and 2006. So, 2002 just has like the cities of Stacyville, St. Ansgar, and Osage in it. And then, in 2006, that agreement addresses like Riceville joint at that time. So, I will also give you guys those copies as well for review. All right. Some other discussion that was on our agenda was just the program eligibility since St. Ansgar is withdrawing. You know, it's just a discussion that we probably need to have as far as maybe everything stays the same and everything's as normal. Not necessarily... I mean, how economic... Other economic development groups, that's not necessarily the case. I mean, sometimes you have to give cities reasons to invest in the services and stuff. And so, just there was no decisions made, but we did discuss like some of those local programs. We can't restrict some programs like the state and federal ones. And those have to be made available to anybody. But what you guys could consider, what we could consider is those local programs, particularly like the Info Lot and the CLP program. So, those could be reviewed. And so, no discussion was made last night. That was tabled. Any questions?
I have thoughts on that, but I kind of want to hear what your board has to come up with.
Right.
Did you convey some of those thoughts?
I conveyed some different things. So, I mean, one, I propose that we restrict programs. I mean, those particular programs, nothing with the child care. That would be detrimental. But particularly with the Info Lot and the CLP, either restricting it or possibly passing, like not restricting it, making it available to those city, you know, to residents and the businesses within city limits of St. Ansgar. But passing along those administrative fees to those, the users of the program essentially. So, if they're asking if they want $20,000, you know, maybe it's a 15% administrative fee. Maybe it's a 20% administrative fee. I don't know. I don't know that anybody... I don't know if anybody really liked any of those ideas last night. They also like threw out their... We did have some guests and they threw out some ideas as to maybe some of our utility partners. Some of them, you know, our local utility partners, I mean, they contribute. I mean, they're very good to us in investing some bonds. But some of those other ones, like Black Hills, I mean, they don't give as much. And so, the thought was is that maybe those costs should be passed along to the utility providers as far as, you know, continuing to offer those programs to St. Ansgar. The mayor was also there last night. And so, he wants to see every... He wants to see those programs made available to the citizens of the city of St. Ansgar still. But the only difference he wants to see is that they don't have the voting power. So, they're withdrawing, losing that voting power, but still having access to everything else as is. As a director, I would be highly concerned about that because if everything's going to be mostly like free or the same, like why would Osage, the city of Osage pay services? Why would Riceville pay for services? Why would Stacyville pay for the services and stuff? And so, it's highly concerning to me that if you don't give them a reason, like why would any... And then what? You know, I mean, I mean, you guys are contributing a lot, you know, to our budget and stuff. And I definitely appreciate that. But I mean, it really takes all of it to make economic development services happen. And so...
I guess I would agree with that. I mean, if that's anything that you... If you want to participate in something, you... Unfortunately, money is what the thing is and you need to contribute in order to play the game.
Right, right.
That's how it works. And I'm not... We talked about this yesterday. I'm not restricting the services to them, but also there are administrative fees, administrative services that are happening in your department in regards to managing those programs. So, yes, the services that this board provides in those programs can continue on, but it needs to be made up as far as what your department is doing in the administration side. So, I guess that's my thought.
I mean, it's not uncommon. I mean, most of these do contribute to, you know, the county, you know, economic development services. And so, I just don't know if people don't understand the connection. I don't know. There was like so many thoughts and discussions last night and comments. And but anyway, more information to come on that. And then, one last thing we did have on here as an agenda item, St. Ansgar Development Corporation status discussion and possible action. And no action was taken on that item. I'm just going to explain this and that, like, how the practice has been is that the cities pay for the services. So, the cities are paying the dues to the commission. And so, by doing that, that allows the development corporations to also have a seat at the table. And so, just, you know, we did have to discuss this last night. It was just a good time because with the withdrawal of St. Ansgar, you know, we did have to discuss, you know, what they want to do with St. Ansgar Development Corporation. Do we allow them to stay or, you know, with a fee or whatever that is? And so, no action of that was tabled. So, no action at this time. All right. One last thing and then I'm done. So, there was a construction program. I'll have that on the agenda next week, you guys. I'll get that information to Rachel and get it on the agenda, so...
I believe this is Sherry Penny. There will be an informational webinar on the statewide solution fund on June 18th.
Thank you, Sherry.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Goodbye. Any other department head discussion? All right. County engineer update. Good morning, Rich.
Good morning. Good morning. Couple of updates. The Rock runs up in the north part of the county right now. I'm hoping to horrendate because of the rain. The Echo Bridge, we're waiting on guardrail. And I just got an email five minutes ago that they might be coming in tomorrow. And they can knock guardrail up pretty quick. I'm going to guess if they get up here tomorrow, it'll probably be done tomorrow. But waiting on a walkthrough with DOT on that one, too. Been working with the city of Stacyville or the organizers of Brat Days. They had some requests of... They had two requests a while ago. One was to allow no parking in town during Brat Days. I think probably for the parade. I said, that's kind of the... I know it's a kind of a foreign market extension through town, but I told them the parking was up to the city, whether they wanted to allow parking along there or not. That's kind of out... It's the right of way, but it's outside the portion that we maintain the 2080 agreement with. So, I said, that's up to you guys. The second request was to put two portable stop signs out, one on the south side of the park and then one on the north side of the park to slow traffic down. And I said, the MUTC doesn't allow portable stop signs, but the Iowa has an amendment to the MUTC which allows portable stop signs. My bigger concern is, number one, we don't use stop signs to slow traffic down. Number two, I'm worried that if we have two stop signs that close, we're going to queue up traffic and create a traffic problem where you're going to have people backed up while we stop and going. So, I'm going to try to work... I'll talk with sheriff a little bit. Maybe he has some ideas, too. But I'm not going to say we won't allow a portable stop sign. I just don't know if two is the right amount because we could end up having a traffic backup if you're always stopping and you're going and you're going to get probably more people upset than anything else. So, if there's a speed concern... And I know there's a lot of people... And we want to keep everybody safe, but I don't know if two is the proper amount or is the right thing to do out there. So, I'm working with them a little bit to come up with a better solution. So, just to kind of... Just so you guys are aware of that. So, and then I'll be gone after tomorrow through the week. But we do have this professional services agreement for this bridge to review. This is for the bridge. We have Echo Avenue right now we're doing. And then, over a mile and up a little ways is another bridge on the same stream that we're looking at getting redone, too. So, this is a professional service agreement right now. It's for doing the hydraulics and then determining whether or not we need to put a bridge in or a box in. And so, the fees are for $28,904. The preliminary hydraulics and things like that to get out and survey it. And then, depending on what structure they think they need to do, it's either $18,000 for a box culvert or it could be $27,000 for a bridge. But just to get that project moving into the next fiscal year, I'd recommend we move forward with getting them doing on that project as well.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the professional services agreement for RAC on the 152 bridge.
Jim, any motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Todd, second. Any further discussion? We'll call Jim.
Aye.
Cindy? Aye. Pam?
Aye.
Todd? Motion passes.
I think that's all I have for you this morning. Are you here for the whole meeting? Yep, I'll be here.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Approve resolution to appoint deputy treasurer. Good morning.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning.
I know you approved the other elected officials deputies a few weeks ago. It was following the treasurer's conference. So, I came back on Monday to the resolution. I wasn't comfortable with the way it was just because at our treasurer's conference, we had two attorneys talk to us about HR issues. They are on retainer with Heartland. Their kind of introduction was, if you see us in your county, it's not a good thing because we're the big guns that come. So, they're... We did talk about deputies and their recommendation at that time was to do deputies for one-year terms and reappoint them every year so that you have an opportunity to discuss issues or concerns so that they don't just have carte blanche for four years. So, that is what I've chosen to do since that was the recommendation. So, I'm requesting the board approve the resolution to approve my two treasurers, General Reader and Cassie Minor, until June 30th, 2026. And my plan is every year that we will have like a review and discussion and then go forward after that. That's why mine's separate from the other ones you did. Resolution's essentially the exact same thing, just the end date is not concurrent with my election term, so...
Okay. We have a resolution 1284-25.
Move to approve 1284-25.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Pam, second. Any further discussion? We'll call Todd.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Cindy? Aye. Pam?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right. You're up for the next one, right? Discussion and possible action, waiving penalties for ELL delinquency.
Building on leased land. I sent out delinquent notices a while ago. Farm Credit Services contacted me and wanted to know what the amount was for this month because it changes every month. It was during May. So, I sent in information back. They responded with a bill of sale that they had sold the property in 2023 to an individual, a local individual. And in looking into it, I went to the assessor's office and it was recorded in 2024, April, in the recorder's office. But when it got to the assessors and the auditors, there was a problem with the parcel number.
So, the email was fine when they listed the parcel number, too?
And that was incorrect. So, it was on hold. So, it was sitting on a desk waiting for the attorney to correct it as requested. Didn't get done. So, the individual that bought the property actually owns the land it's on. He was willing to pay the building on leased land and then it'll just convert to a building on his regular tax statement. But I felt since it was in the courthouse, But I felt since it was in the courthouse, it had been sitting and waiting for correction, that it wasn't fair to charge that individual the $23 penalty that had been incurred on it. He did come in and pay it in full, but I'm just, as I tell everyone, I don't have the power to waive penalties. But I do have the power. In this situation, normally we'd have people come down and talk to you specifically as landlords, but I did feel it came back on the county's shoulders. So I told them at that time that I would just come to you and ask to waive the $23 penalty since he had no knowledge of the bill out there. The best case scenario, Iowa nice, they would have sent it to the new owner, but Farm Credit Services is a big company, so I think it just kind of fell through the cracks with them. And then when they got nervous and started looking into it, they did respond with details to help us get it cleared up, so. I'm just requesting the waiving the $23 penalty on the building on leased land taxes.
Any question? So to word, amend, a word to, a way to word the motion?
A consensus, I'm requesting a consensus of the board to waive the penalties on the building on leased land for area class.
I will move as you spoke.
Jim made a motion?
I'm second. Excuse me, I'll second.
Todd, second. Any further discussion? Or call Pam?
Aye.
Cindy? Aye. Jim?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down.
Come for a week.
You, too. Approve resolution to transfer to conservation land acquisition. Okay. So when we had our audit, they talked about we used to just do transfers as an item of note. This should actually be approved by the board, even though it's approved in the budget, but just to do it by resolution. And then this resolution or the two that we have, it actually states we can actually do this at the beginning of the year. So like Rich would transfer twice a year for the rural basic to secondary roads. Conservation land acquisition happens once, but we can do them in July. And the way that it states, we can actually do both those transfers under the one resolution at the beginning of the year. So it just states this one that we're doing $30,000 from the general basic fund to the conservation land acquisition. We already approved all this, right? Yeah, you guys approved it in the budget last fiscal year. Okay. Is there a motion to approve resolution 1285-25?
I move to approve resolution 1285-25, the inter-fund operating transfer.
Jim, any motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? Or call Pam?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Approve resolution for transfer to secondary roads, number dash, sorry, 1286-25. And it's just the second half of the rural basic fund, so it's $740,383.56. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? Or call Todd?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve firework permits. What is it, Cindy?
Did we receive any insurance notification on this?
I don't have it. I did not. And so I tried looking back to see kind of in the past. And I, the other one that I could find that has never done it is Russ Nelson. Not that it matters, but does ever like, I can't think of the person. Flashing Thunder, they always send it. And I know we requested one from Carpenter last year. I really should have went to Carpenter, but yeah. So I did not want to pressure.
I guess I'd like to see that. And do they, do they have any insurance on any of this? Or, I mean, some people have, some people do it, some people don't do it, or we can be consistent? Or we're just going to do it however, or what?
So my concern that I raised with Rachel was that the name that it's being issued to is different than the signature, you know? So that was a, so maybe if we can get there, what? Yeah, right, right.
She, it's obvious that she filled the out.
Right.
If they don't need it till July 5th, I would reach out, see if they have insurance.
They had that.
99% of the time, nothing would ever happen, but for some reason something drops in somebody's house and we've approved it and just so I think it's kosher to do that.
Table it till next week and see if we can get insurance for that. Number 12, discussion of possible action on general assistance.
Okay. So I attended the special session of the Board of Health yesterday and they were in agreement that the director of our public health, Laura, would be able to serve along with members of their team to cover the general assistance portion of our county's responsibility. So I move that we appoint Laura Huesman, the director of general assistance for Mitchell County. They would be doing that with no additional charges or no additional money spent on the part of the county. And I can discuss more after we, or if there's a second.
Okay, Jim made a motion. Is there a second? Second. Jim, second. Any further discussion?
So I just thought I would clarify that I also did some training set for a while with Ashley and she was very gracious to, to share some of her knowledge on how she's processing those general assistance forms. And so the plan is that Laura and her team, she will have more than one individual training so that if someone comes in, then they can indeed handle general assistance. We will need to do some updating to phone numbers, websites, that kind of thing. They, they do have a copier fax machine over there that does not sound like anyone else in the facility would be using it after July 1st. And Laura's, the public health team would not necessarily need that copier. But I'm not sure Rachel was going to do a little checking with the, the company that they have at least with its, its lease under Mitchell County Social Services. So since that entity is no longer, you know, would no longer be in place, I'm not sure what the status of that is. I think we're checking to see, you know, if we can just step away from, from that, the remainder of that contract. It was 60 months and it was entered into September of 2023. So there's some time left on that, on that contract. But it was for a considerable amount of copies a month. And they, the public health team has theirs, so they wouldn't need an additional copier or a fax machine. So it would behoove us to, they have a fax line and two other lines that go into that building. And we discovered that the food bank's phone number is the same as County Social Services' phone number. So they will just, will touch base with the food center or food pantry folks again because they don't actually use the phone, you know, other than, you know. As far as internet service, that will be shut off by County Social Services. They will be able to use the guest services of public health. Whoever is in that facility currently using County Social Services' guest wifi will now be able to use the, the public health guest wifi, so. Yeah.
Rachel, were you going to, were you going to look into that contract yet, is that what?
I tried contacting the salesperson and I believe she's on maternity leave, so I haven't heard back. She is, I was told she was checking emails, but I can call their 800 number and see.
Okay. I would be curious, I would be curious what a buyout would be of it also, rather than just walking away, also just ask the question, you know, what, what would be a buyout for, for it?
So roll call Todd?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So they will start training right away then so that they can take advantage of the knowledge that they have there.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on Heaving Road, did you put that on the table?
No, I actually, Todd and I was aware of the situation and talked about it.
I had Rachel put her down. An individual stopped when he visited with me a couple of weeks ago. It's 390th and Cameo Avenue by St. John's Church. Possibly 390th to Balson would be, would be able to turn it into a hard surface road. I visited with Rich a little bit on it. I did look, it looks like from Cameo to Balson, there is one residence on that mile. I'll have Rich, maybe he, he put some quotes together on different things and did everybody get a sheet, the sheet? And.
I just put some numbers together based on conversations that were had with me about whether we seal coat it or pave it or whatever we do to it. There was options of, compared anything from regrading it to seal coat to pave. So I gave, I gave three options there in the sheets you guys have. One was for seal coat and that number, the seal coat number is, it's a tough number to find. I know that I talked to, Kasuth County did do a lot of seal coat work. And I got an average price for a mile of seal coat. Now, seal coat's just more like a 3/8 rock with some oil in it to bind it together. That's all seal coat is. But if we're going to, if you're going to hard service a road, you're going to need to make sure the base is going to be able to support any loads that are on there. So you're going to have to build a base that's going to take heavy traffic. A gravel road, you know, if we're not, a gravel road will yield to heavy traffic and we go out with our mortar grinders and we'll shake it back up. But if you put a hard surface on there and you allow that base to yield, your hard surface is no longer capable of supporting loads and you're wasting your money on, say, a seal coat. Or I gave an option there for a one-inch asphalt surface on there because I think you can get a little structure out of one inch of asphalt versus a seal coat. But again, one inch of asphalt doesn't take a lot of, a lot of load either. It's going to, it's going to perform maybe a little better than a seal coat. But the more important thing is to make sure you've got a base that can take the loads. So the numbers you have in front of you are for an eight-inch macadam stone base and a four-inch choke stone. But it also requires removal of a lot of the old road bed in order to produce that because we can't, we can't raise the road too much higher than what it is because we've only got so much right of way to work with to get proper four slopes in there. With the right of way we have now, we're already, it's, you know, kind of a limit of what we want for signed slopes on that road. So if we're going to try to work things out, we really can't raise the footprint much higher in order to maintain proper size slopes, especially if you're going to put hard service on that, so. The numbers you have are really rough, but based on the DOT's prices for some of those items, I did, I did knock rock numbers down a little bit because I kind of know what we pay for rock around here and what it would cost to, to at least have it hauled and delivered. But there's still placing the costs and stuff. There's a contingency in there because I don't know exactly what it's going to cost to place and roll and everything else. So the numbers might be a little, they might be high, they might be low, but it's just a target right now at what you guys have.
One inch HMA is not going to hold up. I mean, you might look pretty for a year, but then.
Yeah, and seal coat, seal coat's a little bit more pliable or it can be forgiven, but it's not, we can't put, it's not probable to put that type of a surface on what's there now while rebuilding the base.
So Rich and I had talked some last year, earlier this year again, about, you know, the thought was by some of the citizens that maybe if they reshaped or raised the road a little bit, that, that there would be, you know, less snow drifting and that kind of thing.
There is a stretch in there where the field is higher than the road. And in that location, I know that the north ditch is probably part of, one of the deeper parts of the ditches on that road. And without a full blown survey to find out which way the water is supposed to go. I mean, you start building up the road higher, now you've got a steeper four slope and you've got a deeper ditch to maintain to get out of there. It's, I know on the east side, it looks like there are shallow ditches, but again, without a full survey to find out which way the water flows, there could be, there could be possibilities of raising the grade a little bit there if there's a lot of silt in those ditches. But driving it, there doesn't appear to be a lot of silt in the ditches to, to be able to bring the road up high enough to clear that part in the field where it could be causing a drifting problem, so.
I talked to people on Franklin County just before the meeting in regards to what they're doing for some things. I mean, this is something you could get ahold of the engineer and ask him what shoes he left with. See what, it's more of a rock stabilization product than, than anything, but. And then I, I also have, when I worked for you, we talked about this stuff quite a bit and paving new roads and justification of paving new roads and that type of thing. We, we struggle to pay for the roads that we already have surfaced and it's a difficult, difficult call when you start doing something like this. Then you are setting a precedence for doing something like this in other parts of the county also. It's just, it's questionable. So what we talked about in the office at those number of times is, is there a participation with individuals that want this to have, have it done? Rather than this, the county footing this whole bill? Is there, is there going to be some help from the people that actually want this to have happened? Are the adjacent landowners, are they willing to help, help pay for some of this? Those are all questions.
And the Iowa code allows for assessment districts for certain things like that. If, if they're really adamant about wanting a hard surface, there, there's assessment districts. Other counties, and we don't have those, other counties have kind of a policy in place on how they approach situations like this as far as here's the steps we need to go through. I mean, the DOT and the Iowa code have one thing already where we've got to have, if you're going to pave a road, there's paving point, there's a paving point checklist to go through in order to meet, if you meet the qualifications of a minimum of 50 points in the checklist, you don't have to have a public hearing. But no matter what, if you're going to hard service a road and they don't meet those qualifications, you have to have a public hearing on that, too. I don't know, I guess one thing is, is the definition of hard surface is seal coat considered, I mean, I would consider seal coat a hard service road versus, there's hard surface and there's paved. So I mean, I don't know, I think, I don't know if they, I'd have to look at, they call it paving points. I don't know if a seal coat qualifies as paving or just hard surface. There's a discrepancy in, in there as to what the definition actually would is as far as that checklist. But I think regardless of which direction we go, the, the cost is in, a major cost is in rebuilding that base. Because no matter where we go, we're, we're going to have the heavy equipment on that, whether it's infrequent or not, it takes, it takes one day of heavy equipment to destroy a road and it takes us months to regain that back. So if we're going to put any sort of a hard surface on there, whether it's a full depth pavement or even a thin surface to, you don't want that, you don't want that base to yield on you and everything you've done to try to, to get that surface to go on, so.
Also, I wondered about the rock stabilization because it wouldn't have to redo the base. You just actually use what you have there.
Right, and I don't have in there, I didn't put in a cement stabilization either. I know that that's another option. There's, I, I didn't get any numbers on cement stabilization, but that's another option, too. What they come through is they, they dump straight cement powder around the road and they'll mill it in with a certain moisture content and they'll roll it in and shape the road and it gets hard. And then on top of that, they'll place a substantial amount of rock, whether it's six inches of, four inches of rock, so. That's another alternative to stabilizing the road. But again, doing that, you're going to build a road a little bit.
Yeah, I think this product was cheaper than that. It's a liquid and I don't know exactly what it is.
They call it Vicky Dews?
They, they talked about it and they're using it. I was talking to Franklin County supervisor.
Okay.
They were having some good luck with it on some of their roads.
I don't know if it's the base one product that they, they.
I don't know.
I'll talk to.
Sent me some pictures of it and it's, I mean, it's, it locks it down and they're using it on their trails quite a bit, so.
Is it, is it like a, maybe, and I'll, I'll get the information from Franklin County, but do you know if it's something that's just a yearly thing or is it more of a five years you treat?
No, I would bet, I don't know, but I would bet it's a yearly thing. Because, you know, you start plowing on it and stuff.
Yeah.
And then you get spring.
Free stall, you still get.
Soft roads in the spring, so. And I'm sure it doesn't shed water where you, the water probably soaks in, so. But anyway, that's, I know a little bit about it, but I don't know.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to Jay.
Okay.
So Rich, these numbers are for, in front of the, on the north side of the church, so many feet east of the church to the corner of Cameo?
I just gave you a one-mile. I just gave you a one mile, for a one mile stretch. Now, if we're gonna add more to it, you said that the costs are gonna be, you go a few hundred feet north, south and east. I mean, the numbers are gonna be a little bit bigger. That's just per mile costs that you.
Okay, because it's actually, I'm guessing, I believe there's a mile between Cameo and Balsin.
Yep.
And the church sits on the other side of the mile. And then there's also how many feet, north and south on Cameo. But that doesn't, you don't do anything with that.
Well, I just gave you a per mile of cost and that'll, you know, if we go beyond in certain areas, we'll just, those numbers will add up, you know? They'll just add more to the.
So this, right, this doesn't do anything going north and south?
No.
Past the cemetery nor does it do anything to the east of the road?
General idea of what.
Or to the south a little bit?
What a per mile cost for that.
Just one mile to get to that corner, that intersection.
So if you add, you know, I don't know how many feet you go either way, if you add another quarter mile, add another quarter of that dollar amount on there, then it'll be that. Rough numbers.
Well, it's good discussion and we kind of have an idea what it would cost. And I guess Jim and Rich can see what, what county is it, Franklin or see what that's about.
Stan?
Basically, there are 70 active members out there at St. John's, which to me is rather impressive. But over the years, I've been informed that they've had to cancel church because all of the roads were basically difficult to navigate. And so regardless, there should be one road that is upgraded. Like County Engineer Brown said, that should be more navigable. A few years ago, when I was on this board, we did hold a public hearing on paving points and we passed it, not only from Balsin to Cameo, we also passed, and I don't remember how many feet, in front of the church going east and on the side of the church going south. Basically taking up the parking area. So we did screw up, we didn't go north to the cemetery. But I guess that would be not as important as it would be going from Balsin to Cameo and from, from the church. I think, I'm just speaking for myself, there's other members here of St. John's, but I think we would be happy if, to start with, next year, that you could do the upgrading and the seal coat. At least, we, we lose a number of people that wanted to come and actually belong to St. John's, but they refuse to drive gravel. I mean, I realize that's not a major whatever, but yet again, there's only three churches that I know of that don't have hard surface. One's in Mona, it's only two blocks away from a hard surface. The other one is on 317th Street. I believe that also was in St. John's name of it. And John Marishi, he's a bus driver that I see quite often, he's a member of that church. And apparently, they're down to 12 to 14 active members per Saturday. They don't have Sunday services, they have Saturday night services. But it's getting to the point that, again, they're going to be wondering what's happening. So it's only really St. John's out there on 390th that is very active.
Can I ask, you, you said that back when, that they voted to, to pave that road? Did, or did I misunderstand that?
We approved the paving points.
Oh, got it. Okay. Okay. Ah, the point from how far they would go on either side of the church, on the north and on the south and.
Yeah.
And then to the west. Okay.
And that was the, the last meeting that I attended as a county supervisor, so we could look that up. I mean, but.
Okay. No, I misunderstood that. My bad.
Several other roads, I think. Was there two?
I'm sorry.
Were there several other roads included in that conversation back then?
Yeah, there was.
I think we had.
Supervisor Boaklander at the time wanted to have Mitchell Hein Street paved from T-38 to T-26. Part of the problem that I saw with that is two miles of that is in Floyd County. And obviously, I don't think this board would be interested in paving two miles of Floyd County. And, but that was part of the conversation.
I remember there were several roads on that. I think, I, my memory's not that great, but I thought it was also approved pending financing or funding, you know, if there were funding available.
Yeah, that makes more sense. Okay. We'll let you guys.
So in any.
Work on it.
In any event, well, I would like to ask the board for next year to consider this project, when you say to upgrade the 390th and then also seal coat.
I do, I do have a question. Remember back before they paved the road past Deer Creek Church, there was something done at that time? Does anybody remember what that was? It was quite a few years ago. It's before it got blacktopped, but it was kind of that it went from the highway to the Deer Creek Church. And that seemed quite nice, but I don't know what it was.
We, we put, quite a while ago, we put down, we put rock through a pug mill and, and a pug mill puts a liquid product in it and it mixes it. And then we put that through a paver and we actually paved the, the pug mill aggregate and we paved it with that. That created a hard surface, but then we also seal coated over some of those and so that that was a seal coat that you were driving on.
The one that you did base is what we called it, right?
Well, it was, it wasn't an asphalt treated base. It was, again, it was a, Heine had his own term for it, but it was a liquid product that we stabilized the aggregate with. I don't know if it's the same as what I was talking with you about, I'm not even sure. But we seal coated over the top of a lot of those and seal coating is, is a asphalt product that you, you mix with rock and then it, it hardens. It's not a real long-term lasting product and heavy traffic is, does not do well with, but you, that's what you may have been driving on when you're, what you're talking about.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that was a long answer for that, but.
No, I mean, it seemed like a good.
I think it was a seal coat road.
Good solution at the time.
Yeah. And it actually, yeah, Omar Jean had mentioned and Jeff, you know, is there some way we can reach, even reshape the road to, to kind of fix some of those low areas and, and.
We can look at it as far as regrading it ourselves.
Well, that's what I was looking at. That's where the, the bottom line was. And that's just an estimate. But I'm just trying to figure out if we regraded it, where are we at with?
Right.
You know, where do we pull material from?
Yeah.
We're building up, you know, a lot of things that we looked at there. I guess I'm just, you know, I don't know, I guess I haven't driven that road much in my lifetime to know whether, where the dri, if there's a drifting problem and of course, depending on how full the ditches are, there's a drifting problem everywhere. But, you know, is it in that location where the, I've gotta assume that it's where the field's a little bit higher than the rest of the road. And then when you get closer to church, when you're at a corner and the ditches are already, the ditches are already filled in for parking.
Yeah, they're shallow right there.
You're plowing stone, you're rolling stone onto something that, you know, you're just building it up higher and creating a drifting problem too.
Right. I mean, there's actually quite a few problems with the road. I mean, there's drifting, there's frost bubbles, or whatever you call them. Sometimes there's potholes. Yeah, it's, it's not a good road.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sounds like a gravel road.
No, it's worse than a gravel road.
Okay. Well, we'll do some more.
Do some more checking into some more options.
All right. Maneuver management, oh, sorry. Items in the meetings attended.
I forgot to mention last week, when I was talking about the Soil and Water Conservation District, they have their, they're gonna be putting that billboard up, well, the billboard's up, but they're gonna have their advertisement thing on, on the billboard. And they're going through the hospital in regards to that. So the hospital foundation has a program where it's turn your har, turn your harvest into health, where people that are taking grain to the elevator can actually designate a percentage of that grain to go to the Mitchell County Memorial Foundation. And so I just wanted to say that publicly so people knew that. I forgot to do that last week and so that's an option for people submitting grain to the elevator. They can contact the Mitchell County Foundation. I'll just leave it at that. Contact the Mitchell County Foundation for more information as far as, I don't like to mention names sometimes on that publicly. So, so contact the foundation.
Okay. Go ahead, Nan.
I had a substance abuse meeting where they discussed the, a couple of the programs that have been used to, for teaching youth about the dangers of alcohol and drug abuse and gambling and so forth. Too Good for Drugs and Prime for Life. There are some pros and cons to each and the, the ages that, that we're reaching students is getting younger because the alcohol addiction in the state of Iowa is actually quite high. And so we're looking at those programs, working with Prairie Ridge and schools to, to see what we can budget and facilitate here, here in Mitchell County. And then I had the special board of health meeting yesterday and I attended the economic development meeting last night and the city council meeting at Stacyville where they are working on some development projects, housing projects that they've got going and projects that they're working on, building additional homes in Stacyville. So.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
I had MCEC meeting, Jenny went over most of it, but I do want to say I am sorry that Sinansker's withdrawing. I wish they would stay in and continue on with us, but it is what it is. So that was it.
Thank you. Maneuver management. Double K farming, 1134 Corner to 20th Street, Sinianskern, Burnett Nursery Unit, 4809 Highway 218, Sinianskern, Erickson Sal Litter, 4857 Addison Avenue, Riceville, Ringneck One LLC, 4187 Walnut Avenue, Riceville, and Valley Finisher Farm with 3923 Valley Avenue, Riceville. Thank you. Public comments?
Well, once again, about Siniansker's, their withdrawal, by a vote of three to withdraw from the 2080 agreement. And we still do pay taxes up there. There is a large amount of unincorporated residential areas in Mitchell County. They're not being served with this to have someone on the board. So that's the way it is with Siniansker. They're hoping, hopefully that Mitchell County, remember, we're part of the, the town of County, a lot of taxes come out here.
Any other public comments?
No. Could I ask that we review the right of way ordinance? I think everyone received that at the meeting next week. I think everybody has it. If we could schedule the public hearing for that or?
We can't have a public hearing next week.
Right. The discussion.
Yeah.
Discussion on the right of way ordinance.
We'll put it on next week.
That would be great.
All right.
Thank you.
Going to adjourn meeting at 9:35.